That's how you classify it.
That's how it actually works.
Wow.
You can't hit one with the word. You suck down here.
That is true. That's true. Actually, this is probably your meat.
All right, everyone. I'm talking to him.
So you're working on podcasting somewhere.
Clara.
Shh. All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five study session. We'll go ahead with board roll call. Jake, do you want to start us off?
Jake Colette, board member.
Briann Dietrichson, board member.
Brad Eller, board member.
Jason Watt, business administrator.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Garrett Peterson, superintendent.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll just go ahead and start with, it seems like we haven't seen each other for a while.
I mean, it's been a whole, what, ten days?
Ten days. It's a long time. Right. Okay, well, go ahead with our school calendar proposal for two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven. And Steph Fisher will present that to us. Hello, everyone. I'm gonna pass out. I'm not gonna pass out. I'm going to pass out some papers for you guys. Thanks, though, for thinking of me. We had chatted last year after we had done quite, just a reminder for those maybe who weren't on the board last year, and then for those who were here, if I forget something, please jump in. But we had talked about last, we had done quite a bit in depth of gathering information, doing surveys, asking families. A big issue had been that fall break, if you remember. We used to have a full fall break, and then we would come back for some PD days on the Monday, Tuesday after fall break. And so it ended up being quite long for families. So this year was the first year that we had made a change based on feedback that we had gathered before, and put those PD days on the Monday, Tuesday for our teachers, as you probably remember from this past fall break. And then the kids and the parents had a full week off this past fall break. And so that was one thing that was really important with the feedback that we had gotten. Another one was the two weeks at Christmas was really appreciated, and a lot of comments on that, especially for any of our visiting teachers who are here who tend to, they want to go home and be with family over the holidays. And so that gives them time to travel. And then also a spring break in, a full week in the spring break was another big feedback piece that they really appreciated. Then there was some controversy. Do we want to start later? Do we want to end sooner? Can we have both? And then, you know, the little pesky things with, you know, instructional days that were required by law to have. And so those were all the things that we had talked about this last year. Other things just to know about our PD days, we do have two professional development days that come after each term. It used to be one. With COVID that came in there, we were allowed to have the second one that was put in there because we went into doing digital, you know, unit plans where teachers were building that plane while flying. But one of the things that we found is by doing that and giving our teachers access to each other, we put in a day there, half a day where they, the entire first grade's meeting together, third grade's meeting together, or middle schools are meeting together. It's really, when you look at our data and the increases it's made, that has a lot, it coincides very well with that. And it's a big piece of our professional learning community process. And so those were some of the things that we had talked about this last fall. Through our lens of our wonderful secretaries here on the first floor, who take most of the phone calls after these things are decided, they came to me and just said, Steph, what do you think about maybe changing the look of our calendar? They're like, do we need like the Saturday, Sunday on there? Do we need, I laughed, I said, well, if Saturday, Sunday comes off, are people thinking we're getting rid of Saturdays and Sundays? I'm like, no, else they don't think that we're not getting rid of Saturdays and Sundays. And they, so they looked around and they polled examples from various districts. And so this was the one that they landed on that they thought from feedback from parents, parents would like the best. It's visually easier to read than what we've had in the past. They also said, this came from them, what about doing two years? Could we do, if we make a decision, that was something we discussed last year on this with the board, could we do two years and make a two-year decision? So those were a couple of things that have been changed. And so what you have in front of you are this year's calendar, the current calendar we're in, twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see just with the key at the top what each of the days means. You can also see then, we just took the same calendar, if we like it, and it has worked, and we've had positive feedback, and just put it on top of twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, two years out. A couple of things that have changed since we spoke last year is now graduation. This year, I believe, is it the twenty-seventh, is it the Wednesday?
Twenty-eight, that says for high school graduation.
So the twenty-eighth, so that's now, so we would just put it the day before on each of the calendars for the high school graduation. And something else, Corey, it was actually you who mentioned possibly doing a survey again after fall break, just to see where we're at, to see if people like what we've done. And so, and I'd be happy we could, we could do that. You did, you did, you said something to the fact, let's just kind of wait before we, because two years was brought up last year, and then we were kind of wondering.
So what did you find out?
I, I have not surveyed. We did talk to WPN and all the reps there and asked them their opinion of the calendar. They love the idea of changing the look. They like the idea of the shorter fall break, most did. One wanted it longer, and one thought we should do away with it. But the rest are fall break.
Oh.
Yeah. So.
Good luck with that.
I know, I just thought I had to voice your opinion here. And so they love the two weeks at Christmas, the spring break. They did request, could we end before Memorial Day? So if you'll look at the twenty, the next two years, it looks like, ooh, we made that request happen. That just happened to be by the calendar. And that wasn't.
Because Memorial Day is the thirty-first.
Yeah, Memorial Day next year is on the thirty-first. So it looks like we were very responsive to the request, but in all honesty, it just happened to be on the calendar.
When is a win?
Yes, I'll take, we'll take it. So I'm just here to ask your thoughts, which, which you'd like to do. The proposal that we have here is to take the calendar, if it worked well this year, put it forward on the next two. I personally, through being a representative for the calendar, have not heard any specific complaints from teachers, from parents. The biggest one was always that long fall break was really hard on families.
But we would put it out for thirty days.
Yes.
That's where you get your, that's where you get your feedback.
Yeah, my question was, would teachers have a chance to reply?
Yeah, perfect, for sure, for sure. So your thoughts, that's the information that I have.
Based on what we've done in the past, I, I really like this. I think this is, there, there's a lot of hard work that's gone into this point right here. And yes, we did request a few years out, and we've got that. And I mean, some of the feedback that we've had in the past is we're starting too early. We're, you know, the end date. We, we worked on spring break based on parent feedback. I think this is a great.
So are we gonna give some feedback on fall break before we?
We sure can. That's what I'm here to ask you. I'm.
I think it's great if it, it really only affects our teachers.
I think you could put it out if you'd like, and then collect the feedback before you approve it.
Like, just put it out for review.
My guess is if you put it out, the biggest feedback you'll get it on is fall break.
From TGRS.
From just everybody.
But then that's gonna mess everything up. If you, if you say, okay, the teachers, there's give, take.
Why don't you kind of explain again the thinking behind the fall break?
It, it was long. It, we, we ended up to get enough instructional days.
Why we even have it, you know?
Oh, the fall break.
Just kind of a longer fall break, yeah, the week.
Yeah, the week. Well, the PD days are what goes in there, and I think that's the piece that's so beneficial. And, and we've seen such an impact on student learning there for sure. And then the other three days with fall break, historically here, they've always been tied around. And when I first came, it was called hunting break, or something of the sort.
But it was only, but it was only Monday.
Well, it was Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday.
It was Thursday, Friday.
All right, when we grew up, it was just Monday.
There used to be a conference, right?
Yes, there used to be a U A conference that was tied to it, and also.
So they let the teachers out for that.
Yep.
And that really wasn't that long ago. And so this schedule here, I just like this because it allows the teachers to have a break too at the end of term. Because this, this is the end of term, and.
The idea around the longer one is that we gave the teachers a full week if they, you know, they wanted it. But it did turn out to be for, for families, you know, that long, because five days, the weekend, and two more.
Yes, and this does put some, kind of like nice bookends to your, to your terms, right? You have a, a break, and then you have Christmas break, and then you have the spring break, and then you end the year strong.
I just remember hearing from some of the elementary teachers that, and if I misquote anybody, let me know. I'm sure someone will tell me. But that having the longer fall break was actually really disruptive from an elementary perspective.
Sounds like that, yes.
Yeah, to just being able to keep those kids engaged in school and keeping in the pattern of, of going to school and things like that.
Especially for, we heard that a lot from maybe our preschool and kindergarten, if those students were home for that long, it was almost like starting over with procedures, and, you know, they're five and six years old.
Did you hear that this year with the shortened break?
I did not.
No feedback like that this year?
We have not got a lot of complaints on that.
I guess we could see what people say.
One of the, one of the things to be aware of with March is we end the term, and then we do the PD days, because there, this is community feedback that they wanted, March was too early for spring break. So we do two weeks, which is actually good for us academically. It allows us to get a unit in. We discussed this at length. And then we get hit spring break, and then you come back, and you're really kind of hitting your last units before the end of the year. So that has turned out, that was, that worked out pretty well this.
And instructionally, as far as days go, there are a few more instructional days in that last fourth term. But especially in the elementaries, with assessments and testing that goes on with summative assessments at the end of the year, that does allow you to have enough instructional time, as well as then you have your assessments at the end. Because it does take some time in the elementary if you're chunking learning and giving kids enough time sprinted out, just spread out.
Is each term pretty balanced, or how long is each term?
Yeah, that was the question that came up with last year's calendar, was they were, they were really imbalanced.
They, they are, well, they're, so if you go, the first quarter, first term has forty days instructional days considered in there. The, the second term is forty-three, and you can count one of, you know, those two PD days at the term. One of those are allowed to be considered in there, to be considered as part of your hundred and eighty. There's forty-five and the third, and then the last does have the fifty-two. But as I said, with assessments, state assessments start for elementary the last, usually the last week in April. I know that it is, that's different when you think of secondary, non-assessed, you know, electives or non-assessed, you know, classes or subjects, but you got, what, eighty-three?
You will, you will have, you will hear from some secondary teachers that teach semester classes. And their concerns are valid. It's just, that's really a result of ending the second term before Christmas, more than anything. We always used to go two weeks into after, and it just, we didn't feel like academically it was the best thing for your kids.
I didn't love that as a teacher, because it felt like they would forget everything we talked about. And I would rather have the term end, button up the unit, and start fresh after Christmas. So I, I agree with that, with what you said.
Back to the fall break, how, how did the teachers feel in the upper grades, in the, in the middle and high school?
Of the fall break, I have not heard any feedback that they, most of it when we, when we moved to this last year is when we got most of the feedback. And most were like, yeah, we like our fall break, but we understand what this is doing to families. And so that was most of the feedback that we got from our last year's surveys. Yes, so we haven't done a new survey this year, but I haven't heard any difference since then.
I think you'll probably hear on that one, put the calendar up for thirty-day review.
I love that it's two years out, because that's what I've heard, is parents wanting to plan senior trips, wanting to know when graduation is. Or I had someone ask me a couple of years out, they're already planning their spring break, so.
I just got a text last night, like, when, fall break, actually.
Trying to plan Thanksgiving this year.
Well, I can tell you when that is.
I just, I wrote it down on the calendar, so I know now.
I did ask that with the WPN too, just, you know, quite a few of them have moved here from different school districts than what they've had before. And they said, most of them were two years out. One told me that their district was three years out, but that third-year calendar always was getting messed with. They're like, something would happen that wasn't thought about, and that, that, that third-year calendar couldn't be counted on. So they recommended two.
Well, if we put two years out, then next year we just put one, and we're always just two years out.
I love that.
I just want to say something.
Please do.
And I don't have a solution.
Okay.
But I'll never like that the students are out the fifth and sixth of January. Because the whole world goes back to work, and the students are still out. But I don't know what the solution is, but I'll.
Those are the days you go to Disney.
What's that?
Those are the days you go to Disneyland, because everyone else has gone back to school.
Well, and, and there could honestly be a solution, but it, it then does go back to starting school earlier, right? Like, we had spoken and chatted about that the last time we'd done this. But then you would have to start school earlier in August to put those PD days at the end of December, which, you know.
Sometimes it, it is just how the calendar falls. With, with the first being on a Friday, January first.
Yeah.
You can't squeeze them in at the end of that week. If, if the first were on Tuesday.
It's the same the next two years.
Yeah. For seven, for seven years.
Anyway, I, I'm not, I'm just, I can, I'll never wrap my head around that that's a good thing.
Just to, a, a, in answer to that, would the teachers, I mean, it's right, it butts up right to Christmas Eve, but do you think they would prefer right at the end of the term instead of January? Or moving those PD days to end?
I'm guessing pushing people up to Christmas Eve.
Yeah, I get it, I was always shocked when the.
I'll be quiet around it.
It was a no.
I said I didn't have a solution, I just said I don't like it.
You can't just drop problems if they're on the way, Corey.
Hey, Brad, Brad does stuff like that.
I've grown no ideas, I'm just saying.
Just to quote Brad, I won't know.
So I, the, the balance of this always, there's always, here's the, the major things that you, you have to take into consideration. The start of the school year, you can always flex that. You're always balancing off starting earlier or pushing it back a little bit. Christmas, do you want to give people two full weeks? And that's usually a suggestion that you do give the two full weeks. Fall break, do you want to go, cut that back to three days? I think that'd be a little bit tough to take that back. And then you can always go later. So those are the things that you balance out.
No one wants any of that, so I'll be quiet.
This will be one of those things that no matter what you do, it's a little bit like the boundary. Was that too soon?
A little bit.
Yeah, so no matter what you do, there's a contingent that's gonna come in and say, I value that more. Like, I want a full week for fall break, and I want, I like the longer fall break. So you'll hear that when you get this calendar, or, you know what? I don't like the fifth and the sixth in January. Like, push, push it into Christmas break, and then you'll have another group that says, no, I want the two weeks.
Yeah.
So you're all, once you get into this, there's those major dates, and people will push on you no matter what. So you just got to decide what you value.
And our last, last year when we did this, I think we had at one point four different, we had three calendar options we kind of started with. And then we kind of threw a fourth one out there, a fourth and a fifth one out there, just to kind of mess with a few suggestions people had. And we sent that back out for another review. That, those didn't stick, there was like a week at Thanksgiving instead of the fall break. I don't know if you remember that.
I remember that, yeah.
And, and that didn't stick, that didn't get a lot of positive feedback. And so this was just the collective efforts of putting out about three or four different options, getting additional feedback from, balancing from our families, and then also our teachers. And ton of respect for our teachers who came back and said, we do like the week, but we do understand. And also, as, you know, Brad had said, some of our more primary teachers were like, it's, it's long for those kids to be out, so.
Where would we, where would we put those days if we were to change them?
Which days for the fall break?
Are we gonna make it longer?
No. If, if we get all this feedback saying, we don't want fall break.
I think we should solve that and forget that feedback.
I think, I think they were talking about in other words, the week plus.
Oh, it's, it's shorter now, so you think everyone will be happy because it's shorter?
It's shorter now, that all came from last year.
It is shorter, it was like, oh, it was like ten days.
Yeah, it was long before.
Eleven days one time I counted.
I liked it this year, I really liked it.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything, usually we.
It's a good calendar.
Basically.
No, I think it's great, yeah.
I think the, the thing for me, that, that fourth quarter, having, I mean, it's the only one that doesn't have a break, like a week break between terms, and it's a longer one. So having that, having that break where spring break is a couple of weeks in, you know, I mean, what do you do? There's not a lot you can do.
No, it's nice, we used to call it the death march, because there was like no break, and it's the longest. Yes, and, yeah, so that's, that is nice.
Yeah, the, from January, also February to spring break was, that's when it was hardest in our house.
At least, you know, January, you have President's Day in there, you have, you have a couple, like there's.
King Day.
Yeah, you really don't have a lot.
I know, something about that third term, though. Have you all experienced that at home? Third term was the worst in our home.
Third?
Uh-huh.
Yeah? Yes.
Because more the time you use.
Because you have to shovel stuff out.
Well, it's dark.
It's dark, cold.
Yeah, for sure.
I, I think this represents a lot of feedback and a lot of work, and I appreciate it. I, I like the calendar.
I have to give huge kudos if you see Brooklyn and Threes out there. They, you know, they take the bulk of these phone calls, like when parents call and they want. And so I was very impressed with them. They came and they were very proactive and were like, can, are you gonna be talking about the calendar? And I was like, yes, is there something? And these were some things that they came up with, and came up with some really great solutions and proposals.
The layout.
Yeah. I love it, I really did too, I thought it was awesome.
So we're putting this out for thirty-day review.
Yes.
So it's not a, we're not approving it.
The next step will be.
You have to put it out for thirty-day review.
Yeah, but this just says, under action items, consideration to approve, but we, that should be different.
That should be, that should just be there.
To put it out for the thirty-day consideration, yes. That, or it would delay it, you could get some feedback prior to it, or we just, we could do a survey ahead, or we put it out now, get the feedback based on what it is, and come back and then talk about it again in a month.
Okay, so the consideration is to put the calendar out for thirty-day review.
Yes.
Let's do it.
Any other thoughts? Okay.
I think so.
That's what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, though, Corey.
Not really. Went on to a Friday.
Oh, good.
The question, the question, what's your, this one? This one is Easter, it's the only one where Easter doesn't match with Christmas. People.
He just, he'll set that just so she has the feedback.
So for April of twenty-eight, not that we should adjust our schedules around religious holidays. It just so happens that Easter is later that year, and, and it, it's the only year that it doesn't match.
Spring break.
Spring break. So like, next year, Easter is here, and this one is kind of a standalone, and this one, it's at the end. So if we get feedback, I'm guessing that'll probably.
Are you talking about twenty-twenty-six?
Twenty-eight.
I think people prefer the time of year versus connecting it to Easter, but I might be wrong on that.
I, I think so too.
I did not like it in March.
Yeah.
We had at one point last year talked about, do we put in, you know, do they go to school one, we go to school one day longer and put a, like a Friday, you know, put a Friday out, out on, you know, right around that time as well. That's something else that we could, and we did talk about that last year, one of the calendars at one point too, so.
Everything's possible if you just go later.
Yeah, we just gotta go later.
Nobody wants that.
And then I'd be lying on my Memorial Day bed.
And I did appreciate the later start, because I have nieces and nephews in Nevo and Alpine, and they both went back before us. And it was like, we don't start till next week, it was so nice, yeah. Awesome. And I just have a little more August.
And I'm sure I'm the only parent who's, on the first day of school is like, why aren't you in school? We don't start school today. We start tomorrow. It's the first day of school, not for me.
Yeah. That is true.
Not the freshmen, yeah, another couple besides you.
Yeah.
Okay, opening timeline for Deer Creek High School superintendent.
We're just gonna hit some highlights, and then if there are other questions you have, we can get back to you on those. But here's some highlights as, as we move, some bigger things that we've had questions on in general that we just want to make you guys aware of, and let you guys ask any questions. And other things that you're hearing or questions that you guys are hearing, have a discussion about it. So some of these you're seeing right now in November, we're, we've opened the coaching positions for the follows. We've also opened, we're gonna be opening the coaching positions that are in the school, the teaching, coaching positions, the people that help out coaches, so we'll be opening those up fairly soon. Our, our boundary was supposed to be finalized and then announced assistant principal, so we'll move on that pretty quickly. We remember on the assistant principals, we've kind of put the pieces in place one by one over the years, so there wasn't a mass hiring of new assistant principals, and that we had experience when we split the two schools. So we've kind of been building up to this for two years. We really will have one opening to fill, and we'll, we'll, again, the way we will fill that position is we create a pool of candidates. We do have an existing pool that we carry over for two years, of people who have applied, that we fill are valid candidates for an assistant principal, we put in the pool. Some of those may have got a job in another district, but we, we leave those people in our pool, even from our own district. And then we will have another application process and put more people in the pool. So the reason we do that is so if we have an immediate need, like let's say somebody resigns at the last second, we have a pool to choose from that we can take really quick without going through the whole hiring process. So that's, that's kind of where we are. So that last assistant principal will probably be more in the January area, that we're able to announce the last assistant principal, once we come out and say where our current assistant principals are going. December, with, December fifth is when we're planning, we're doing two windows for open school choice with the boundary that has been set. The first one will close around December fifth. We can adjust that a little bit if we need to, if we get some feedback on that. But December fifth is gonna be that. We'll kind of send some information out here in the next couple of days to make sure people are aware of that and how to do that. And we'll hit that on a couple of different levels. We are dealing with the High School Activities Association right now. On the different things, we've, we've met with them once, they kind of know our situation, that we're waiting for to see where the first window of school choice falls. And then, then we kind of deal with basic conversations on numbers. And we've let them know that's where we are in the process. And we'll keep working back and forth with them on that. Just so you know, the way that works, High School Activities Association has an executive committee that you go before, and you kind of have to talk through things with them. That is a pretty big group, about forty people. It'll have representatives. It'll have representation from different regions, it'll have principals, it'll have athletic directors, it'll have some superintendents. It's just a pretty wide group, very representative of every little pocket that is involved with the High School Activities Association. And then you go before their board, um, which is a smaller group, um, or around ten to twelve people, and you kind of, the board makes the final decision on those things. Uh, the executive group kind of says, we hear your recommendations, they talk it through, they'll have concerns, they'll raise those concerns to the board, they, but they don't make any final decisions. So just so you know, that's the process that we'll use back and forth. Um, we, we are hoping in our conversations back and forth, if we can get that, their, their decision process with both of our schools, move back to their January meeting, that would be more ideal for us, and that's what we're working on, uh, making that happen. But we do not have that worked out at this, but those are some things that we're working on. Um, this is a big one for us, um, and the whole thing, the team leads finalized, so really in our model, you really rely on, uh, uh, team leads within a department to make sure that the department operates at a certain level. They lead the, the process that helps us come up with our rigor, the standards that we're upholding in each course, the common assessments that we use to make sure that we're on the same page with what, what determines competency there. Uh, they, they lead the conversations on Monday, talking about how to support kids. Um, you really rely on those people. So when we split the school, those people will be named first in both schools, so we get, we, we've looked at what, we've taken a process where the teachers have told us where they like to be, we've looked at like, these guys are ready and capable of being team leads, now let's split those out first, so we make sure we have good, strong team leads in both schools. Um, and, and that we're able to hit as much as we can. There might be a teacher or two that we have to go to them and say, we know you said you preferred here, but we really need you for the organization to be here. And most of the teachers, just so you know, on the end of their questionnaire they, we gave them, they said, we'll go where you need us, we get it, but we would prefer here, or they truly say, we don't really care, and so put us where you need. Um, then, once we get that done, then we'll also start talking about splitting out into strong teams. So teams are gonna drive our, our decisions, and we just need strong teams in every school. And then one of our main goals with this, that the, the secondary district team set, which is district office people and administration, is that we would split the school in a collaborative culture. So in other words, at least that first year, they will get back on Mondays, and they will work together. That will allow us to stay on the same rigor level, these guys have been teammates forever. The schools are two miles away from each other, this is not a difficult thing to do. Uh, that way they continue to do their work. A lot of that is by, to make sure that we keep the rigor level the same and the assessments the same and the conversation the same, so that holds out, so you can guarantee a, a certain level of standard in both schools, and you don't start having people saying it's different in each of those schools, so.
I like that.
We'll, we'll, we'll build that out to where you can see, we, we'll start teacher placements. Um, we actually hope to be, uh, close to done with a lot of those placements by the end of February. We'll still be messing with, like, some ideas of, like, okay, CTE, here's the numbers that we'll start getting most of the PC, CR data, and these numbers look like this, maybe we'll have a teacher that can teach one day here and one day here, or we have people, we might need to hire a teacher here to maintain the programs we want. We'll start looking at all that stuff. So we'll have some of that still to, to undertake, but by the time we get to February, we'll have a pretty good split out on the two schools. And that's when we're gonna come back in and, and open up, okay, now you know where the teachers are going, for the most part, you probably know where our current coaches are going, we might not have all the coaches hired yet, I'm talking about athletic coaches or, now you've got the information you want, we'll open back up that second window and allow people to go down through April fifth, um, to give us that information. And then we feel like we do need to put a cutoff there, because we really do need to have master schedules in place and all that kind of stuff. Um, well, we definitely consider, like, in any situation, because we always do this, somebody that comes in late and says, I really have a need to choice, absolutely, we're not gonna be inflexible on that. But there are two major windows you're kind of seeing on here a little bit.
I have a question, this might be hard to predict, but do you feel like there will be a bulk of students taking that first open enrollment, or you think a lot of people will just wait for April? Like, how do you see that playing out?
Yeah, kind of the wording that we're putting on there is if you know, like, if, if you're dyed-in-the-wool Wasatch, and you know I'm going to Wasatch, please fill out the form. If you don't have the information you need, please don't fill out the form. Wait for the information you need to make the decision that you need to. And then we'll just, we'll use the information we have to work things the best way we possibly can, that, that includes initial class building, program building, and also with the High School Activities Association.
The, the more we can get in this first window though, the easier the rest of this is.
No, numbers.
So, I mean, people can rescind it too. I mean, it's not like, once you submit it, then it's, you know.
Will they know that? So they'll know that?
We, we will explain that in a letter.
And it's not a first come, first served. I've had that question. It's, everyone will be honored to capacity or till we hit that cap, right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Those are good questions. Um, here's where it kind of gets real for, for students. I mean, there's, there's a couple of things before this, but student officer elections will be in March for both schools, so we'll run both of them. Um, that'll be an exciting time at the current Wasatch High School to have student elections going on for two different schools.
At least those kids running for those will need to know.
They will.
Hey, if you wanna be on student council, then you should probably think about that as one of your decisions.
Yeah. Um, I mean, that, Brad says that a little bit, and just, it's a very real thing. Um, and I've actually heard some kids talk about that, I would really like to be on student council, and if there's not gonna be as many seniors at Deer Creek, I might see what I can do there. Um, finalized, then we move into April, again, we open back up, we'll, we'll open the, the window end of February, first of March, but it will close the fifth. Um, we'll finalize the teaching assignments, uh, that's where, we'll probably be doing some late hiring. You don't wanna hire too late, the pool goes down really quick, um, we don't wanna be dealing with leftovers, um, from what everyone else has hired on the Wasatch front, but we'll, we'll deal with a couple of those, we always do. Uh, we'll finalize master schedules, um, and then we'll finalize activity schedules for students, and that's where you'll really start seeing the calendar build out for both schools. What activities are gonna be there? Um, we will have sports schedules in place. Um, uh, I, I, I can tell you that, once the High School Activities Association, the, the reason we may not get the January date that we're looking forward to extend out is people are antsy on creating schedules. And so, but I, I think we will get the January date, I think they'll be a, uh, Ja, there, there are schools, like, like Justin's told us, there are schools that have reached out to him, saying, we can place an appreciated. Um, so those, those kinds of things are happening already, that, that people know that the school's forming, um, and so all those things, all those things are in motion right now. And it will really speed up from this point, like the amount of work that has to be done to make sure everything's coordinated, and you've, you've taken this school that's existed that has all these things and all these calendars and all these, and you gotta carry it over it to the other school. And all those things have to be built, and the culture has to be built around the student government and, uh, all of those kinds of things. And so, it's exciting, um, it's fun, but it is a lot of work. Um, and so, um, we'll, we'll get some great teacher leadership and school leadership in place that will help pull that off. And we do think through that, just so you know, who would be like it from an administrative staff to go in and establish some of those things, and a new high school that might have experience with those things. We're taking all those things into account to make sure we get the right teams in place to make sure that both schools are strong, so. I think one of the big things that, that we're, we're working on guaranteeing is the two things that you guys kind of build up, that the choice exists and that we're flexible to the choice that kids are gonna make. Um, and then the second one, um, is that, uh, all programs are available to students in both schools. And again, we've talked about JROTC, those are some things we'll have to work with individuals on that, but that will be our aim in this split from here on out. And you can hear another underlying aim, is that the quality remains the same as well. And I, I think all of us understand, different teachers, um, they, they bring the quality, but that the, the standards are there, the assessments are there, the rigor level's there, the supports are there, the intervention systems that should exist for kids who come in below level are in both schools. Um, there will be some differentiation between the amount of teachers that end up in different schools based off of the amount of support classes, that's what we do, we run support classes for those. All those things need to be thought through, so this, there will be some data mining on some stuff like this as well, to make sure that the systems are in place in both schools. So we'll just keep, that's where we'll be flexible quite a bit till the end, because we could have some last minute things, like, okay, we, we've looked at the data, end of year data, it looks like we need two more student support classes at Deer Creek, uh, do we have enough teachers to make sure that those student support classes are in place? And so, that's kind of how we make sure that this is built in a way that, that fits the needs of kids based off of the academics that they need, so. Those are some things, questions that you guys have, things that you guys have heard or questions, and we can work on those, that you have responses for those. And we do wanna be really responsive to anything that you guys are hearing, so. We think we'll have answers to most of them, and there's some we might say, hmm.
I guess we, I guess we did miss that one.
So we'll talk about it real quick. But I think, I think we've thought through, uh, the calendar that we're working off is extremely detailed at this point, um, uh, and so we, we meet, just so you know how we're working this, we meet like every other week for about two to three hours, and we just talk through, okay, here's the timeline, who's taking the control of it, and we're just trying to keep on time, um, with what we need to do to make sure that this, oh, one other big thing, May, that's actually, with, May first is supposed to be our access to the building date. So that will be really good as well, um, and so.
So are you asking teachers to wait to move till after the school year's over?
Yeah.
So they, we finish strong at Wasatch, and then after the school year's over, that's when they'll start moving.
We're hopeful for that May first. Sometimes construction projects get moved back a little bit, but I.
We want to have the opportunity for teachers to have their stuff moved, like every other building moved, the names, departments, providing boxes, we'll pick it up, we'll hollow it, we'll form, we have all that planned out.
Awesome.
Questions for us?
Is the school choice information that's going out this week, will that go district wide, just middle school, high school families?
Yeah, we'll, we'll give that to you first, um, and kind of our, our plan on that, it will just go to the, to the high school and the middle school families.
An incoming middle schooler, so fifth graders.
Incoming as well.
Okay.
We'll give that to you first, um, we've made a little video up. Sean Kelly is a master, I don't know, what do we call you?
Masterman training.
Oh, masterman.
Moss two point O.
Yeah, John Moss two point O. But we put a little video to it so we can, because people, sometimes reading, you get lost in the reading, you're interpret things from us, we're trying to mitigate that a little bit. We still think we'll get questions of people that don't understand certain things, but we've done a little bit of a video, we've got a, an email written up. On that email, we have a QR code that people can hit on, that will take them right to the form, or a link that will take them right to the form.
It's an online form they can submit.
Yeah.
And it is translated, uh?
Yeah, and, and that downloads to an Excel file, because we need to look at everyone, like, um, we're giving out a thing in the PCCRs that has the same QR codes, so the counselors are going over this with each one, so that that kind of gets out there. And then we'll just start bringing in the information, and we'll, we'll kind of see where things go, um, and we'll definitely attend to where the school choice looks like this one.
We'll literally be looking at everyone, because we've got a couple of kids who, who chose to Wasatch, and they're already in Wasatch boundaries, so.
Yeah, from their PC, from their PCCR.
Sometimes they don't know exactly.
I wanna go to Wasatch.
I wanna go to Wasatch. Okay.
So you know, through the PC, we do have a couple of kids that have chose to Deer Creek, um, so I think we'll get some of those as well.
I love that.
Um, and really what we wanna study is the why, like, so that's part of the form, is they put that in. Um, luckily, we have this AI thing that interprets that really quickly at this point, and will give us trends to look at, um, which will give us, I think, some valuable information for us to know, um, you know, why they're going, maybe where we can support a little bit differently from the support. Um, but, uh, we, we feel good about that process, but we're also very aware that, um, kind of for everyone, this is an emotional thing. Um, and it, and it is splitting the community, and now it's gonna go down to the kids, and, and they're gonna make choices, and, and we just need to be very sensitive to that and aware of that and just supportive, and then we'll do the best we can to do that in the best way that we can, so. Um, oh, so where I'm gonna go back, so kind of, of how we'll throw this out a little bit, we'll get, we'll let you guys look at it first, um, and then we will, um, uh, probably really quickly after tonight, we'll let you look at what we wanna put out, um, take any feedback that you have, uh, and then we will make sure, our, we will make sure that our counselors are very well, are well aware of this, although they are in the high school and are not so much in the middle school right now. So we have time to get to those administrations, we have time to get it to the faculties, we always like our faculty, people that might get questions to know things first and to see things first. So we'll kind of work that down through there, and then we will put it out to the, um, uh, to the, to the community, uh, to the parents, the parents that need to fill out this form, not the kids. Um, and then, but we will, because email doesn't always reach everybody, we will, through the math classes, just show the video to everybody and say, if this is, you need to go, your parents got this email in their box, you need to go do that. So it's a, really about a one-minute video, but through their math classes, we feel we'll get almost, we'll get most kids.
Nobody loves math. Everyone's there.
Yeah, everyone loves math. English teachers should laugh about that.
No comment. I was an English teacher for a reason.
So anyway, that, we'll, so we got a pretty methodical thing laid out, we'll, we'll try to make sure we hit everyone we feel like we need to hit, that gets information in the order that they need it, that we can then take questions and support that. We'll have a couple of people at the office, uh, one that speaks Spanish, that are ready to take calls. Um, and we definitely have to get our school secretaries, because that's, that will always be the first place they go, ready to kind of receive calls and, and, and be able to be directed in the right way. So we'll go through all that in the next couple of days, to try to make sure we're all ready with all of that, so. Questions, other questions on that, please?
Good work.
Well done.
Thank you. I, I think my only other one would be, uh, when are we starting to, um, you know, we talked about introducing people to school, the parent tours, the letting people come to know Deer Creek as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I can say we're working back and forth with the administration, especially at Rocky Mountain. Uh, we're working with, with Lana and her team quite a bit on that, they have some ideas in place. They're a little bit antsy to get in front of kids right now. We don't know if this is the best time to do it. that are a little bit antsy to get in front of kids right now, we don't know if this is the best time to do it, my guess is if I were to guess a window for you, Brianna, it'd probably be in January. Yeah, for the middle school ones, they, they wanna do some things like that you usually do for middle schools in April, where you go and you take your band over to play and you do all that, we wanna push that up quite a bit in our timeline, we're just trying to find that out, then we'll have to coordinate with our elementary schools to make sure that that happens, um, and we might do something different, so, like when I was a principal and we, the high school that we fed into, we did not have the high school come and visit us, we took the kids up there so they can get in the building, fill the building, that might be a good thing for Rocky Mountain right now, to get them into the building as well, um, to feel the goodness of the administration, the counselors and the teachers there.
Like that.
Because it's all, it really is all about people, um, and so, those are the kind of things we're thinking through right now, but we don't have a perfect plan on that yet.
Justin started those Facebook and Instagram posts, where he goes down there and has the little snippet, look at the comments, this is what it's gonna be, here's the field, so those have been posted on Deer Creek.
I think, I think Shailen Rowsey had one reposted, I, I didn't have a chance to watch it, but yeah.
Deer Creek official or something, it's the site, he has a kid one, where we'll start doing stuff with uniforms, so he started those, his first one was like two days ago, and has the comments, the live video, and he has shown them.
That's awesome.
We did see the prototypes football uniform, I don't know if we want Justin Kelly to model that, but we'll maybe have somebody put on the.
I want the link for swag, I mean, I gotta get the swag for this new school.
Have you been to the school recently?
The last time I went was the last tour we did as a board.
If we don't do a tour, just reach out to Justin, you may wanna go, I mean, you're, it kind of affects you a lot.
We'll take you through it.
I went Friday with him, it was great, spent about an hour and a half and.
I think if anybody wants to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Cool, okay, wonderful.
We could do a board tour.
Other questions?
I know I had a parent reach out to me that talked about the potential, more on the middle school side, but the potential for maybe doing something at the end of the year, or something, creating like a sister school with Daniels Canyon and JR Smith or things like that, to help kids start to meet each other and get to know each other, um, you know, I don't know if that's something where they get together, or whatever that may be, but.
Yeah, there's a group of parents that have sent some initial emails on that, and we'll just see what, I, I think it's a great idea, I think you, we've got some parents with some energy around that, so we just gotta meet with them, help them organize it a little bit, I think, that's great.
Okay, I just have one thing, real quick, um, falls into round people. Is this board, so based on the presentation from the New London Group in the spring, is this board, um, wanting to make that a priority at this time to entertain their, um, their CRA proposal? If, if not, we'll let them know that we're not, if, if we are, if we're not, I just wanna know where the board is, that we can let them know we are not willing to make that a pri- wanting to make that a priority right now, or we are, so where are we with that?
I don't know.
Not a priority.
Not a priority for me right now.
It is not a priority for me right now either.
Was that a, not a priority?
Yeah, you have to do some catching up to make it one.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't have, I mean, if someone wants to present, I don't necessarily care if someone presents, it doesn't mean it becomes a priority because you present.
Like in a study session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna share a conversation that I shared with you, but, so I had a conversation with one of the gentlemen that presented, and, and, uh, I think he was just kind of trying to pick my brain a little bit, but what came out of it was, I said, I think if you're gonna get any traction, you gotta give it, you gotta give us something that's more appealing to the district that, or, that, that makes it feel like we're getting something more than, oh, you're gonna get a bunch of money in thirty years, you gotta have something now, and he's like, oh, okay, and.
And it's, it's not super appealing when you come to us and you say, by the way, what you are gonna get is not a hundred percent of what you were gonna get, but you're actually gonna get less than a hundred percent because you're funding this project.
You mean now?
Now.
Yeah, yeah, now, but, you know, he, he threw out like, well, maybe we could do some, uh, teacher housing and reduce price, I'm like, okay, you're on the right track, you know, so I said, but, so unless we have something different that they've already proposed, I would say no.
I just know that, for some reason, we're still part of a conversation out there, so I just.
Because we make it work.
Yeah, without us, it kind of, it doesn't work so well, we're fifty percent of the money.
That's why we're part of the conversation.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, um, I think they're presenting to the city tonight, so, just wanted to see where everybody was, and we'll just let them know that that's not a priority for us right now, so. Thank you, that's all I have. Anything else? Does anybody have anything? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn and get an extra five minutes if we don't have anything, but if there is something, now's the time.
Just a follow-up question, I, I had made myself a note earlier on the timeline, um, where safety was brought up as a concern with my neighborhood, will, when will like the safe walking routes, safe driving routes, when, do we have a timeline on when those will be released?
I'll just work with that on show.
Okay, perfect.
I don't have a timeline on that right now.
Okay, perfect.
Good reminder, Brianna.
We've talked about it, but we don't have a timeline put to it at all.
There's quite a bit of talk of some new roads and intersections that will help us greatly, and I can't really finalize that yet, but it will be a big help for us.
Wonderful, okay, great, great.
Okay, all right, well, let's, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.